Good afternoon, everyone. I want to thank you for coming out, and I would like to call this meeting to order. It is an emergency meeting of the City Council today at 2:00 PM, March 12th. And I would ask that the city clerk do a roll call, please.
Mayor Robertson.
Present, starting at 2:00. Mayor Protem Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Baca Junior.
Here.
Councilmember.
Here.
Rafael Trujillo.
Here.
City Manager Rob Foster.
Here.
And interim City Attorney Eric Bell.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Before we get started, I would like to make a few comments to the general community with regards to today's meeting. One, this is a special meeting. It was called within 24 hours. And so, based on it being under government code 54954.3, it is a special meeting, and if people wish to speak in oral communication, it really should be on the subject at hand. So I wanted to point that out. Also, earlier today, when I came in, I did ask that this meeting be televised, because this is somewhat historic. I've been sitting here now as mayor since 2012 and on council since 2000. I can't really recall when we have actually stopped and had, and took a declaration to declare an emergency. Most emergencies, we usually think are things of earthquakes, fires, something catastrophic. And we haven't really had a national pandemic that we need to stop and reassess how we're going to do business. So I did want to make you aware of that and say that I had asked that it be televised. However, I was advised by the city manager that, he was advised by the city clerk, that we do not have any policy on who makes decisions of when something should be televised, given the weather, and what everybody else has been saying about having people come in for, to not have convening of bodies greater than, say, 50 or 100, and encourage social distancing. So I did think that it would be appropriate that we should have televised this meeting live. But it's not being televised live, so those of you who are in the audience, you are witnessing and being a part of history. I will say that I suspect that it will be posted upon the conclusion, and those that have access to YouTube, you'll be able to share the meeting with those who would like to see it. So with that, I will ask the city clerk, if she has anybody here who's wanting to speak on oral communications on the subject.
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Then the new business, go to the news business. And this is to request the City Council to adopt Resolution Number 7600, declaring the existence of a local emergency throughout the city of Rialto in response to COVID-19 outbreak and confirm the limitation of public events. I'm going to turn this over to the, I guess, the city manager, who, once we go into a declaration of emergency, we will be, and we have been activating our ELC. We discussed that Tuesday night. But once we do, he, actually, the city manager becomes the ELC director. So I take it you would like to maybe start this discussion?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the ability to speak with you. I remember when we talked with this on Tuesday, and we demonstrated how if we needed to be able to meet, we certainly would. Certainly been a fluid situation, and there's been a lot of things that have happened as of yesterday throughout the world. The fire chief has prepared a report that he will, he will share with the council, leading up to what we would consider the council's consideration of the item. And I think, just anecdotally, I'll just share my drive in this morning. Usually takes about an hour and 25 minutes to get here. I think I got here in just under an hour. So things have changed. I can tell you the traffic on the 91 freeway made me feel it was somewhere between Christmas and New Year's. So there's a lot of people hunkering down. There's a lot of people that probably didn't go to work today. So thank you for being with us today. But even coming up Riverside Avenue from Main Street, usually see a number of trucks coming out of our industrial area. I think I passed one truck. So all that being together, we appreciate the standpoint that the council has considered this of an emergency asset to meet and to be able to demonstrate our response to the coronavirus. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'd ask for the fire chief to give his report, and then we'll submit the staff recommendation for council consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council, and especially the audience, thank you for being here this afternoon on short notice. As the mayor noted, the action before you is a request that you adopt the ordinance, declaring a local emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, confirm the limitation of public events, and take other actions that you may see appropriate. We now have a World Health Organization Declaration of a Global Pandemic. We have the state of California's declaration, state of emergency. We have the county of San Bernardino's local emergency declaration. And beyond those declarations, there have been significant changes, as the city manager noted, in the world, just in this brief two days since we met last. As you probably are aware, the NBA suspended their season yesterday. Today, the NCAA canceled the basketball tournament for both men and women, so March Madness will not occur. Disneyland will be closed effective Saturday for an undetermined amount of time. And many, many universities across the country, including here in the land empire, have moved from classroom-based education to distributive learning, where they'll no longer assemble students in classes. Yesterday, Governor Gavin Newsom announced that the state would be canceling or postponing all activities, events, and state-related sponsored activities that involve 250 or more people. They were also very specific that even if it was less than 250 people, it would be canceled or postponed in the event that it could not account for what they call social distancing, and what they define that as, what the CDC defines that as, is the ability to create six feet of distance between people. So as you can imagine, in a unstructured public event, that is nearly impossible. Even in city council chambers, in real terms, as you sit in the audience or you look out from the dais, that would mean one person per every four chairs. So it's certainly a challenge to create an event in the state even, or state-controlled even under 250 people. Right here in Rialto, yesterday, Dr. Avila sent out a message to the parents and students of the Rialto Unified School District, and it referenced the need to limit events within the school district, specific to COVID-19. We've been working with the California Fire Chiefs Association, Public Health, and participating in local, regional, and state activities, and we're recommending this afternoon that we follow the guidance of the California Department of Public Health, specifically, and I'll read it to you, "To delay the rates of transmission and reduce illness and death through aggressive strategies that create social distance, namely by limiting public events." After I wrote this staff report, the county public health director announced that they were taking similar action to the state, that they were eliminating all public events or events on county property or those that use county resources that had more than 250 people. And then they have a special process to review those that have less than 250 people. There is no timeline on the county's proclamation in that regard. Right now, my staff is participating in the conference call that's associated with that, a declaration from the public health director. And while we anticipate knowing more over time, their, their action is very similar to what is before you this afternoon. As noted in the staff report, the government code obviously authorizes you to hold this emergency meeting if determined by your majority vote. Your declaration of a local emergency is consistent with our municipal code and the government code. You'll note in the staff report that it says that we will bring this item back to you at each council meeting and in not less intervals than 21 days. That comes from history and legacy of practice here in the city. The government code that references that actually has been amended at 60 days. We could wait 60 days to bring it back to you, but we are sticking to that 21 days so that we can bring it back to you at every council meeting for the duration of the local emergency declaration. And that would cover us through the time period, which is pretty far out, where we have a three-week break in between council meetings for those extra-long months. As you know, city manager Foster is our Director of Emergency Services, as defined in the municipal code. What that position does and how he could serve well in it was among his first communications with me, even before he landed here. So I know that it is something that is, you know, near and dear to us, hard and very important to all of us serving the city before you. He is empowered under that state declaration made by Governor Newsom and as well as your action this afternoon to issue rules to protect the community. This action before you would confirm the limiting of public events, based on the joint recommendation of the police chief and the fire chief to the city manager. Essentially, all city events, city-sponsored events, city-co-sponsored events, and events on city property would be subject to immediate cancellation under this action. And similarly, any events that utilize city resources, the use of those city resources, even on a private event, would be subject to immediate withdrawal. These limitations would be in place through April 30th of 2020 and would be subject to extension. As we will be bringing this back to you with a staff report at every council meeting, you will know if there is an extension of that timeline. Obviously, we'll make that information available to the public as well. As I noted at the last council meeting, there is a work plan for emergency management here in the city, and that work plan includes updating the city's emergency operations plan and our all-hazard plan, or what used to be called the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. Those get updated in between three-, five-, or 10-year intervals, and we are right in the middle of that cycle for both plans. One is a 2013, the EOP, and one is a 2015, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan. So one of the other things that goes along with that is we need to update the municipal code to right-size for, instead of a Cold War-era approach to hazard mitigation, to an all-risk approach or an all-hazard approach. And obviously, that will take some time, but as I noted on Tuesday, this work can be included in that work, and the framework will still look the same. We, in our municipal code, we refer to a disaster council. The places that have updated that language generally refer to that as a, as a all-hazard planning committee or some other form of activity that allows the council to be involved in directing people outside of city staff to provide input into the planning phase of emergency management. That's not the phase that we are in today, but it is certainly something that is the natural outcome of historic events like this. Generally, at the end of something like this, you would see after-action reviews at the federal, state, regional, and local levels. And then those after-action reviews, very often, in the history of our state, yield the execution of disaster councils. When the state does them, they usually call them blue-ribbon commissions. That usually means that the fire department or the fire departments in general have not done a great job, and they'd like to see something better, and they put something together in that regard. But even if we do amazing in this regard, there was always something to learn from historic occurrences like this, and we would look forward to another cycle of updates of our plans in the future. The staff report notes that the financial impact is unknown at this time, and I would love to tell you that it's known, but it's not. I think you can imagine, and I'm sure you all know that these type of declarations, these type of activities are burdensome on city staff across the boards, but especially in public safety. We will bring back to you any expenditures that occur in the subsequent reports for the duration of this local emergency. I am happy to report that we secured funds from the San Bernardino County Fire Department and their OES Division to purchase supplies for response, namely, those would be goggles, masks, gowns, and other protective equipment for use by your police officers and firefighters as they combat this potential threat in the streets. With that, I would staff, submit the staff recommendation, and your entire city staff is here to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
I'd like to break down a couple elements for you, so that you're clear and so that your audience is clear on what action that we want you to take and in what order.
Mm-hmm.
So the first order of business is to just have a motion and then to approve the resolution that's in front of you. The resolution only does three things. Resolution says that the council finds that there are sufficient facts that constitute a state of emergency.
I'm sorry?
And that because of those facts, you are going to declare a state of emergency under not only the Brown Act, but also under the California Emergency Services Act.
Mm-hmm.
And then finally, you're going to activate and authorize your city manager to act as the Director of Emergency Services and to exercise the duties and powers that are in your municipal code under that. That's what the resolution does. After that, if you've declared that emergency, then the council might have other actions that it wants to take, as suggested by the fire chief. For example, one of those actions might be to suspend certain city events, to close certain public facilities, or to take other actions. If you want to take those actions, the Brown Act allows us to have the council vote by a majority to add those items, and then you can act on it. Once you declare an emergency in an emergency meeting, you have some additional powers that you can exercise. Normally, you would have to have everything written out on your agenda, because if you declare an emergency in an emergency meeting, council can add things as they come up. It's designed to be a more fluid situation. In addition, later on, I know you're going to want to talk about teleconferencing and how to do meetings, maybe to allow people to participate off-site. The governor of the state of California, just today, a few hours before this meeting, issued a new executive order that opens up some flexibility in the Brown Act. When you feel it's the appropriate time, I can discuss those.
Good. Thank you. I was not getting ready to go to that. I was going to ask if my colleagues and they would like to have a discussion on understanding, but thank you for stepping through that. And I don't know, you guys all have your lights on, so I didn't know if you had something you wanted to say before we take those steps, because there are some things that, and just, I appreciate, Mr. Bell, that you went through all of that this afternoon. I went through our municipal code. I must say, there were some things that I would like you to look at and address, especially under emergency response. I know that we have some things that now are electronic, and they're not in the paper book, but they're, in the emergency response area, there was only three pages. And so you want to look at, I'm sure there's more. And Attorney Bell, I know that we want to do the declaration, and then, of course, I would hope that we would go further. I'm glad that you mentioned that a couple hours ago, the governor added an executive order this morning. Not that I will take credit that I, in any way, inspired that or promoted that, but I did write to the governor's office at 7:00 this morning. I have a notice thanking me for my comments, so, and it was a long delay of not only protecting citizens and everybody within that order, but also realizing that we have state employees that are traveling into workstations. We have counties that have already been designated with detection, and I suggested that he perhaps consider work-in-place, because that is something that the state of California has already put in place, way teleworking, teleconferencing, and even working in the building within the county that you live, rather than going into a county that already has detection. But I really appreciate, because I hadn't heard what the governor's executive order was. So with that, I'll start with Mayor Protem. You had some comments, or councilmember?
I have some comments to make, but I'll wait until after we make a decision on the emergency item.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have some comments. You know, I think this is, you know, unfortunate, you know, local, national, international issue, and I think it's important that us as a, as a city and as a body, you know, we take some, some action on this. I know we're going to take action real soon on these items, but, you know, I'm glad that we're able to secure some supplies from the office of the emergency services of the county of San Bernardino. I think that's a good first start in really making sure that our first responders, our police and firefighters, have, you know, the proper equipment as they're out in the field addressing, you know, this potential issue or hazard. The other thing, I've had the opportunity to speak with Dr. Avila, the superintendent of the Rialto Unified School District, and he shared with me some of the precautions that they are taking at the Rialto Unified School District. I know some of the things they're doing is limiting travel. They're also not allowing any field trips for students to prevent contact. The other thing they're doing is any, any pep rallies, any assemblies, they're canceling in the meantime until further notice. So those are some of the proactive approaches they're taking. The other thing is, right now, the Rialto Unified School District just went on spring break. So what they're beginning to do is beginning to deep-clean and disinfect many of their facilities, just to take a proactive approach. I think that's, those are good first steps in regards to that. I know the mayor mentioned telecommuting, which is, I think, what we have to take a look at with, with our current employees, if possible. The other thing that other bargaining groups in other cities and municipalities are doing is they're sending people home if they look or feel ill, you know? So that, that's another thing. The other thing is going over safety procedures with their employees. I think that's something we need to do as a, as a city, and talk about what we should do beyond the first responders, our public works, and any of the other employees that are, that are here in the city. So I think those are some of the steps that we also need to take in mind. One of the things we have to consider is our Grace Vargas Senior Center, and clearly, the elderly are the most vulnerable to the coronavirus. One of the things that the Rialto Unified did is they hydrofoamed and disinfected their entire facilities. I think that's something we may have to take a look at, taking more of a proactive approach, as opposed to just being ready to react in the event that something does happen. The other thing we have to take a look at is also maybe going out to many of our senior facilities here in the city of Rialto and seeing what we can provide for them, whether it's disinfective, cleaning, education, because clearly, they're the most vulnerable group. But I think we have to do more than just declare an emergency. I think that's part of what we have to do, but we also have to take a more proactive approach in the city and maybe try to address it, make ourselves more available, and not just be reactionary. Thank goodness, there hasn't been a case in San Bernardino County. Thank goodness, knock on wood, and I hope it doesn't happen. You know, we all, I think all of us here in the dais, you know, want to make sure that everybody in our community is safe and surrounding communities, but we do have to take a stronger, proactive approach. Like I said, we have to go to many of our sites, I think, our senior centers, which are the most vulnerable, and provide as much services as we can, and educate and continue to educate the public. But those are just some of the things, you know, I know we have to deal with. The hardest thing is clearly shutting down activities. I think all of us like our city events, but I think that's one of the preventative measures we have to do. The NBA has suspended their season, and that's one of the unfortunate things. You know, you don't want to see things stop, and, but we do have to take, you know, some precautionary measures, and I think those are some of the things we have to do and, and continue to educate the public. But thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you. And I'd just also like to thank you for knowing the importance of this, and you, I spoke with you yesterday, and you were headed on spring break to go see your in-laws in Henderson, and you got a call from the city manager last night and came back this morning. So I really appreciate that you showed the community how important this matter is to all of us.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Yeah, I, you know, I really want to thank our city staff for really, for the presentation at the last city council meeting, just kind of drilling down some of the issues that we needed to prepare for. And then I want to thank you again for trying to pull, fill together some of your thoughts and ideas for this meeting as well. As a federal worker, we've been kind of already been working on some of the changes in our own office. And one of them was, obviously, we wipe everything down in the lobby, but the, we're also looking at possible air purifiers for the lobby area, mostly because a lot of the viruses are now airborne, and that's definitely a concern. We have, instead of having meetings kind of in the back with the conference, in the conference rooms, we have them in the lobby areas, and then we wipe everything down to protect not just the employees, but also the public. And so I'm hoping that we have those type of changes in the way we deal with kind of the services here at City Hall. I know that some cities are taking a little bit further. They're actually banning non-city employees from City Hall. That's something for us to kind of look at maybe down the road, but definitely, there has to be a lot of precautions on the way we're doing business in the city. And not just, you know, people who are receiving, the public, and trying to create an environment, not just for the police, but the public, and keep them healthy and safe. But maybe other areas where, you know, they can possibly come in contact with that. I know at the last meeting, we mentioned the treatment plant and some of the issues that might come out from that, so that, you know, I'm hoping to get a plan on how to address that issue that was brought up at the last city council meeting. I'm also, I'm also thankful for the school district and the precautionary measures that they're taking, mostly because our community has a lot of intergenerational homes, where you have young kids living with their grandparents. And, you know, when I visit Julia Palms, I always see a lot of young families living with their, with their grandparents there. So I just want to thank the school district for taking that role and really protecting the kids, because, in essence, they're also protecting their families as well. And I think one of the reasons why we have to make these tough decisions when it comes to our events is because we just want to make sure that we reduce, if not eliminate, large gatherings in our city and really prevent the spread. Because the last thing we want to do is really impact our healthcare system and our emergency rooms in this scenario. So I thank you for bringing us here to go in that direction and try to do what we can to stop the spread of this epidemic. And thank you.
Okay, good. Mayor Protem, did you want to say anything before we act on the declaration?
No, I'm going to speak after we act on the declaration.
Okay, right.
I believe that's the appropriate way to do it.
Okay. All right. So with that said, City Attorney, would you like to cover anything in the, in the resolution?
Mayor and council, I'm happy to go through any part of the resolution that you would like. I'll just summarize again that what you're doing by enacting or adopting this resolution is stating that the council believes there are circumstances that constitute an emergency, not only under the Brown Act, but under state law, that you're declaring an emergency, and that you are activating the city manager as your Director of Emergency Services and asking him to fulfill and implement the duties and responsibilities that are under Section 2.28.060 of the Rialto Municipal Code. After you adopt the emergency declaration, you might want to take other actions, and we can all guide you through those as, as they might come up.
All right. So can I entertain a motion for adopting the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I heard two so moved, so.
I'll take it.
Councilmember Trujillo, uh, moved, and I heard second by Councilmember Joe Baca Junior. Any objections? Would you like roll call?
Roll call, please.
Okay.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Joe Baca Junior?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye. Okay. All right. Now, the second item that you suggested was any other directions that we wanted to give, and I didn't know. Is this now when you would like to speak? Mayor Protem?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have a number of items that I wanted to speak on. One is that I have a serious concern about our first responders and their safety, and I believe that city council should authorize the city administrator to approve any and all funds necessary for equipment that they might need over and above what the county of San Bernardino currently has provided. I think that's important. Additionally, I believe that the city council should authorize the city manager to, in the event that any first responders or any other city employees who have direct contact with the public and could possibly be exposed and be required to be in quarantined, I think it would be a responsible duty of the city to waive any sick leave requirements at, in other words, I would not want to see them have to use their sick leave in the event that they've been exposed doing their job. Additionally, as far as our community, I think we should look at some ways, whether it be through discounts, suspension, or, or allowing payment later of individuals who might have situations where they couldn't afford to pay their water, wastewater payments. So I'd like to see something come back to the city council. I think we should encourage our employees to telecommunicate when possible with meetings. I personally will begin telecommunicating most of most of my meetings. Um, additionally, if it becomes a situation where, um, there are cases of this discovered in the city, I most likely, for the fact that I am a high-risk person with some serious medical issues, I would, uh, I would be, um, participating in the city council meetings by telephone, posting it at the location that I'm at and, and participating by telephone. I think there's one other individual on the city council that's high ri, or not on the city council, but elected that's high-risk, and that would be Treasurer, uh, Correa. I have also been in communication with the school district. I appreciate what they've done. They've been very proactive in everything that the, that Councilmember Baca described. They also informed me that they have done to help protect our kids. I spoke to the city of Fontana this morning to see what they are doing. They had a meeting this morning and, um, they are actually taking special events, uh, case by case or item by item and deciding whether to cancel it or proceed with it. I think that might be a, an appropriate way for us also to, to address events. I think our, I don't know when our Easter extravaganza is, but I believe it's in April sometime.
Second.
So it's, it's still a ways off and, uh, so I, I think we should make a decision enough ahead of time, uh, but, but allow, uh, you and your staff to, to, to make those decisions. I, um, I, I have something personally that I, that I want to talk about, and, and that is racial profiling. Um, the council knows that my wife is Asian. Uh, she and a friend who is also Asian attended or went to San Manuel last night where they were accosted and attacked by a group of people because they were Asian. They were questioned about where they had come from, how long they had been in this country, and, um, and treated very poorly. We, as a city, should not allow any such behavior by anyone towards an Asian American or, or any Asian individual. That's just inappropriate. So I, I want to make our community aware that that stuff is going on. It's, it's, it's totally unacceptable. Um, both of those ladies, my wife and her friend, have been in this country once since 1974, and my wife has been here since 1985. They're both American citizens and they deserve to be respected and not profiled, as does anybody in this country. So I, I would hope that we don't start seeing that kind of behavior in our city. Um, as far as the public, I, I encourage the public to stay home as, as much as possible. Um, big gatherings, meetings, I don't think are, are, are a good idea. So I, I would hope that we would set up some kind of system that if somebody doesn't want to come to a city council meeting, but they want to say something, they can write it out, send it to, uh, our staff in the front office, and then our city clerk could read it out loud so that they can still participate, even if they choose not to be at a city council meeting. So I, I just think we need to be very proactive. Um, additionally, the website information, the information you posted, you spoke about on Tuesday night, there are some inaccuracies between that and what the CDC and the World Health Organization, um, relayed, uh, by television this morning. Um, and that is in regards to how long this virus lives, what it can live on, and what it takes to kill it. So I, I think it's important that the community knows those lengths, times that they have now determined, um, and how long can it, can actually live in the air. So, uh, I think we need to amend our, uh, our website to, to reflect those items. So Chief, if, if you would look into that, I, I think that would be more than appropriate. And I'm hoping that we're, we're updating it every, on a daily basis, so that our community is informed and knows what's going on. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Uh, did you have anything, uh, more to add to the, this next section?
Yeah, just the only thing I would add is just, you know, one of the things we, we could do, just, you know, to piggyback on top of what Mayor Protem said is, you know, if we could ask or if we could pay extra to have someone deep clean all of our city facilities, you know, make sure they're disinfected. I think that's pretty important for the safety of our employees and, and our residents. Um, you know, I think we, that's pretty important. But I would like to see us also go to many of our senior centers and see what we can provide, uh, to them, whether it's the disinfectant, Lysol, whatever we can provide to them to help them. I think that's, that's pretty important.
Excuse me?
Yeah, and I did mention the Grace Vargas Senior Center. Yeah, we could make for sure. I don't know if we're, we want to keep it open. I don't know if we want to have that discussion.
And, and that's, was one of the things I wanted to add, what you, what you were saying. The city of Fontana is restricting their senior center to only seniors. No visitors, just strictly seniors. Something we might want to think about.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of one of those things, just kind of a case-by-case basis, but for sure, I think we need to go in and deep clean our senior center. Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman?
I think with all the ideas that were shared today, I think the big, big message we want to send, I think, is to be able to, uh, protect our residents and to be, uh, protect our employees. So I, I know with a lot of the decision-making that's going to be happening through our city, uh, manager, uh, those, those, those values, those, that kind of vision and the way we address, uh, the coronavirus epidemic, that's really important. We just want to make sure that everyone is safe. Um, and, uh, if we, we do need to have a budget item come by, I think that's really important, not just on, uh, you know, extending some of our janitorial contracts, but even like buying the equipment, as I mentioned before, because I, I really do feel that we need to, we need to, uh, invest in, in trying to keep our employees and our public safe as they come to City Hall. But then, uh, later on, we're gonna have to really look at, you know, access to City Hall. And, uh, like I mentioned to you, there's, there's cities that are banning non-city employees from going to their City Hall. So if it gets to that point, I'm hoping that we're able to kind of be able to be responsive enough of, in terms of what happens in our community. Thank you.
Yes, well, I think, uh, you know, it's not so much suggestions. I think we need to, we're here now and we need to actually give the city manager some of the things we would want him to carry out in the role as now that he's the ELC director and we're in it. And I guess all that you've said are definitely points that we should look at. Uh, today, along with the governor's executive order that I haven't had a chance to hear, I also know that the city of Los Angeles also did this morning. They took an effort to really minimize the number of gatherings that are gonna be. They've even encouraged people, you know, and, and this goes beyond just the health part. It goes to the economic impact to our community, to our small businesses, and as we well know, that the, uh, the Dow is definitely down, uh, by so many percentage points. We're into what they call a bear market. I mean, so the ramifications is broad beyond just the city of Rialto. I would say for, with the small businesses, we really have to remember that they, not only are they there for their livelihood and to stay open, but they also are employing a lot of, uh, people, a lot of part-time. So even if we suggest to minimize, uh, going out or going into gatherings to create social distancing, maybe what, uh, the mayor said, and I would encourage, also maybe consider still having meals, but order them from those restaurants so that they still keep that kind of revenue coming in and keep going. That said, the thing that I think I really would like to share and say, as I mentioned earlier about the governor finally going and, and recognizing, we're talking about the broader public, but we also have to talk about our workforce. And I appreciate what you said about our workforce and our public safety officers and our police. And I, you know, in the plan, and I was looking at our plan this, this afternoon, uh, I am a former retired state employee, deputy of CA status, and I am certified in, as OES. So I know the structure and I know what has to happen. The, uh, city manager will be the one that handles and directs and, and he needs to keep, uh, his key essential. One of the things in the OES is that we learned that when you have an emergency, the first thing you need to do is make sure that who are, all those who have to respond can take care of and be comfortable knowing that their family is safe and secure. So family still is first. Then, once you know that you have your family and you have people in a place, and we're usually talking about floods, fires, earthquakes, um, but this is not one of those. This is something that is just moving and airborne. I would ask that, not today, but that the, uh, city manager acting as the EOD, uh, uh, Emergency Response Director, that you also have a, maybe a plan. So to the point that I said to the governor, having people work in place. If you're in another county and you're commuting, perhaps that staff and them can be working from home rather than having them come in, I hate to say it, but coming in from counties that are already having detection and coming into the county, work in place. If they're essential, then it's, it's known that they need to be here. I talked to the chief briefly last night and said, okay, who's gonna be, uh, in the OLC, uh, under, for your part of it, for the public safety side? He may be there, or he, he's gotta have a subordinate command person that's there. And I would say the same for you, uh, city manager. You are the director, but you can delegate to your, to your safety. You may need to think about, you're in Orange County, uh, the deputy city manager's in Orange County, the new community development director's in Orange County, and I would hope that you'd come up with a plan that they maybe can telecommute, work in place, and leave one of your other team members, maybe the acting onsite person. Jessica Brown lives here in the county. So does Angela McGrath lives in the county, as well as Mr. Brent lives in the county, the city clerk's in that county, as well as your public or director is in the county, and I believe the chief is in the county. So we need to think beyond just what we're doing here and then look at our employees. I said it to the state mainly because one of the things it's gonna do, people who are able to commute in from wherever, San Bernardino Riverside, they're either driving in and they're going into counties that already have detection and have, some of them have death, or they're also riding on public transportation and they're riding in on the metro link. And they ha, are riding in on those facilities to get to their workplace because that's the only mode of transportation they have. They're, they're generally not riding in. I've been on the train. You're contained with everybody and there are multiple things that are going on in terms of respira, respiratory issues. So I just would say, not today, not right now, but maybe within 14 days, if we get to a point where we end up with detection, we need to think about people, how much can we do to have people work in place, work at home, teleconference, get the work done. We, we internet, we email each other all the time here and we're all on the same, this, this campus, so we can still get things accomplished. Um, you know, and that I pointed out, is to your point in your opening comments this morning, it was really amazing how light the, the traffic is and coming up. And I suggested to them, to him also, that if he looks at it and moves state employees back to wherever they happen to reside, we'll probably have an unintended, a benefit of having less congestion on the freeway. So I'm hoping that, that, I did get a note that says, "You have successfully sent your message," and thank you. So maybe that's it. Uh, the liability, I heard in a number of things, somebody in Sean's report, talking about the facilities we need to look at. We're talking about the senior center. Um, I, I think at some point we will need to assess, how do we determine if someone, uh, has some concerns and what do we have, will we need, do we need to have some kind of stations, uh, probably posted at places where we're gonna have those who are subject to be vulnerable? Because the senior center and the activities is kind of a point of socialization for them, and so I just would hope that we, you know, we have defibrillators. But maybe we need to make sure that the staff that's gonna be down there have the ability to notice any changes in some of our seniors that are coming. And also think about those that are gonna be there, what types of training and safety measures are we giving our employees when they are probably gonna have a closer contact with those who are more vulnerable? Uh, we have events coming up. We have one this Saturday. It's the Eastern Little League's opening day. I think I mentioned it Tuesday night. I would only ask that the director, if you make a decision that we need to cancel something, uh, please give us the notice and maybe let us know of that decision and what we're gonna cancel within as much time, but no less than 48 hours, so that people can adjust their schedules accordingly. Um, it's just why I thought about that, because this morning they interviewed two gentlemen who had came in from Denmark on the news to watch the Laker, the Lakers game, and they were canceled in disappointment. And they thought, well, there's still things to do, and they mentioned they'll still could go to Disneyland and Universal Theater. Well, it sounds like that's out, so, welcome to California. Okay, so it's not, you know, it's not doom and gloom. It's for us all to be very, very diligent and, and helpful and, and observant. And that was the other comment that was made this morning by, um, Garisetti and to Mayor Protem's point. This is the time for us to be kind, to look at each other and make sure we're, we're trying to make sure everybody understands we're all in this together and not cause racial profiling or, you know, give a sense of anyone feeling like they should not be wanted or belonged. I will encourage, and I, yes, I wrote these, uh, governor for selfish reasons. I have a granddaughter who is commuting in every morning from a zero-detection county into Los Angeles County, into a building that's over 2,000 employees in the building. I don't know how you keep six feet distance and not consider that that's going to be hard to have social distancing when you are in cubicles or you're in spaces that are within five by five or 10 by five. So, yeah, it was a grandmother, very much concerned. Uh, and I didn't say Mayor Deborah Robertson. I just put Lili Robertson, so the resident. Anyway, those are my concerns. I would hope that, you know, we, uh, we, we act. I love what, uh, Councilmember Trejo said about air purifiers. I happen to have one at home as well, and, uh, I don't know, you know, it, it serves a purpose, but I would really like us to figure out what we can do to minimize, uh, the transfers of anything. So that said, um, is there any directions that you guys want to make in a way of a motion or, uh, I, other than just?
I don't think I'd ask, is, is broad to maybe re, I guess, read back the direction? I know that we've given direction. I, I don't know if you, any, my colleagues?
And maybe also making some comments.
Sure.
I don't want to interrupt. And can I, I'd like to include one thing in that, and that is the, the, uh, the MACs that we've, I, I'd like to see those expedited, so that any of us that need to telecommunicate or can, can do so, not having to do it on a telephone. Those are on site. Correct, Jessica? Be informative. Okay.
The laps, paths we have.
I'll be happy to read my notes back. I'm sure the clerk has notes from the record as well. I, I do want to bring towards one item that was part of, uh, the fire chief's report. Um, in, in consultation with the police chiefs and I, and in communications that our community services director, Mr. Brentz, has had with the fire chief, him and his staff, uh, were discussed and polled, and, and they believe that, that all special events and response should be canceled. Now, I understand that might be a, a, a large thing, but your, your professional staff has communicated with your emergency staff about that. Um, Sean and Mark both recommended to me, based upon the, the timeline, that if someone tests, uh, positive, there's usually a two-week wait, and then it might take upwards of a month, if not longer. So your staff report had a recommendation that our events be canceled through the end of April. Hearing the comments from the council, um, uh, acting both as city manager and your director of emergency services, knowing the next time that we would meet would be the 24th, my suggestion would be, in, in support of what staff has said, that that cancellation be until, at the minimum, the end of this month. And that will allow us, the 24th, I was looking at my calendar, and if we want to give 48 hours' notice, that would be the 25th, 26th, 27th. If there was an event on the 28th, I guess we could have that. But, um, I would say to be able to be in concert with what I've heard, at least until the 27th of this month, that, that those events be canceled. And we know the most, one coming up soon is this Little League event. I, I think I need, I'd, I'd like to have some clarity on that if we can.
I appreciate you pointing it out.
Is that an actual city, city event, though? They, they, I believe they utilize our facilities, though.
They're on our city's facilities.
Okay, so the facilities they utilize are us. I'm sure they have a, a rental agreement on that or not. Mr. Brentz?
Yes, as a part of our, uh, city's policy on alloc, allocation of fields and, and whatnot, they have that, uh, use of the field. Uh, the representative for Eastern Little League is sitting behind me, Ms., uh, Julie Garcia.
Mm-hmm.
But are we actu, we, we don't intend to actually close parks, do we?
Uh, unless the council gives that direction, but I think that, uh, uh, we do have those issues with the gazebo's being rented, so that, so that there's more than, uh, there's usually no more than 50 people per gazebo, but you can get people in the park of up to 250, 300 people.
This is where, excuse me, but I think this is where we do get somewhat creative and, and think about. think about the event. Now, as some of, as you know, the NCAA is holding the March Madness, but they're not allowing spectators. The thing I think we need to think about, but...
They just canceled it.
Oh, they canceled it, so even there...
As did the NHL.
But I was gonna say, perhaps the thought was that, you know, if we use the threshold of no more than a large gathering of 25, we have to decide, have some kind of way that we determine how many people could be in and accomplish that spatial need. I wasn't, we need to think about not only the fact that they're on our sites, but the liability associated with it, even though we may not be running the events ourselves. I was going to say, when you mentioned that, not only that event, but if I recalled, you had mentioned, either in the telephone conversation, we also have the passport event coming up on the 21st. That's, tends to be a large gathering, a lot of people, and the, keeping the six feet distance is something, so...
Our farmers markets?
The farmers markets.
That would be, I would consider that part of a large event.
So that's, so there's more than just what we have on the calendar events. There's, that's why I said, at some point, we also need to think about the workforce and how many people have to be here, essential people, what's the operation? If we're gonna try and encourage people to either delay, like you said, bills and paying bills or coming into or coming out of their space, most of it is now trying to shelter in place. Wherever you are, trying to stay in your own environment, so I don't know how we sort it out right here, but you're right. The timeframe, if we ask that you, knowing that that's coming up on Saturday. Now, you know, the communities here, I think if people wanted to speak to the subjects of events that they're impacting, we're welcome to hear from them. I don't know if Ms. Garcia had some thoughts on, excuse me, Mr. Perry, I didn't know if Ms. Garcia has some thoughts on her concern about the event this Saturday.
I have been getting phone calls also.
Can you, oh, I know you generally, would you step over there, Ms. Garcia? Thank you.
Sorry I got here so late. I'm not the only one that's having opening day on the 21st. North is also having opening day, as well as, I believe, Park. Most of the Little Leagues in my district are, opening day is the 21st. Now, I have no problems moving it to the 28th.
Okay.
I just have to change the photographer and all, everybody else, but it's not, a week or two is not an issue for us.
Okay.
I just, according to Little League rules, must have a certain amount of games in to qualify for All-Stars. That's the only thing we have that is a bearing on our players. But losing a week or two for the safety of everybody...
Good, thank you.
Is something we need to do.
I think we could. I think we could work with the calendars and perhaps if we move one out, we may be able to get an extra game during the week on a site to catch up. I don't know if all of them have to be on Saturday.
Right now, I know North, and I cannot because we're sharing the same field because of the construction. So we are at bare minimum right now on being able to get our games in. But a week or two is not going to kill us.
Okay.
Now, you're saying that you're worried about the opening day ceremonies. Can they still practice, though? The practice is a team-by-team situation.
These are the things that we're, I'm glad you're here, so we can hear what the thoughts are, because we, I'm sure we are all sitting here, and we don't have everything that we need to think through at this moment, so I appreciate you raising that, and I think Councilmember Bakker Jr. wants to comment on it.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
But I believe we all wanna work with everybody to still keep things going.
Yeah, I think the big concern is clearly the amount of people that would be there for an opening ceremonies, but I know one of the things, the Rialto Unified School District is allowing for their teams to practice and play, and I don't think we wanna stop their season. I think we should allow them to practice and play, but may have to just tell them, look, the ceremonies may not happen just for the safety of the entire group. I think that would be a fair option.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
If we were to cancel opening day, which is not a big deal, I meant, it's when we get all the kids out there, we take photos and everything, but if we go and continue to play baseball, my games don't start till the 23rd and play the games, we're only gonna have two teams on each field at a time.
Mm-hmm.
So that would be the other question.
Yeah.
Could we continue that still?
I think we could. I think you could, and I think that's what we're gonna do, is work out how, if we can really minimize the, the community gathering or those spectators that come out, perhaps we can even look at having the opening day ceremony as one big thing later in June or something, where we do also tie it with playing ball.
Not a problem, and I totally understand that. And like I said, opening day is when Grandma, Grandpa, Uncle, Aunt all come out there and see the kids out there in their uniforms, so I can understand moving that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, my only comment, I think that's clear, and I think it's, it's a good, if you see the, even though we've seen some professional sports outright canceled before that, we were seeing soccer games that were being played without anybody in stadiums. So I think it's a way for, you know, perhaps six or seven, as long as the families wanna participate. Certainly, it's their choice if they want their children to participate or not. But I agree with what I've heard from the council, is that it's, it's kinda trying to control the spectators and the parents and the grandparents that would show up. And, you know, this might give us an opportunity as well, even though I remember going through Little League and Pony League with my dad as my coach, God rest his soul, is the standpoint that it always seemed on closing day, no one showed up. So maybe we have an opportunity to make closing day as big as opening day in lieu of not moving forward, and maybe it culminates with a July 4th event, which is gonna be a Saturday for once here in the, in the city of Rialto. So I think there's a number of things that we can do to make that. I will bring it back to the point that, you know, our next time meeting with the council would be March 24th, and I have to present that recommendation that staff, if, if within my authority you vest me to make that, I will make that call. But if we're talking 24-hour notice, I would say, and I, it's words we've heard, and I'll say it again, just out of not only abundance of caution, we need to be cautionary. The events this weekend would need to be canceled, if not throughout the end of this month.
Okay. Yeah, and I don't think it's at 24 hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Within forty-eight hours, yeah.
So I'm just, I'm responding to what I've heard the council say.
Okay. Mr. Brentz, you had something?
I was saying that it was canceled. I thought the council member was gonna speak up, and you just delivered the fact that even because of the inclement weather, we wouldn't be able to play in the parks this weekend anyway. So, we're already canceled.
So we know, yeah, we're canceled.
Yeah, that was Bud Bender Park.
But the ability for the leagues to play, what I'm hearing, as long as it's managed with the leagues, it sounds like something will continue to go and the situation's fluid. If it gets, if it gets worse, then maybe we have to pull it back. But I think at that time, then reasonable minds, especially league representatives well, would understand that, that we're doing it for all the right reasons, and that we're not doing it to be punitive in any way.
Good. And just a thought to maybe help Julie, is maybe you can continue whenever you get a chance to do the photos, but just stagger the times for each team to come in, you know, and still get to do your photo shoot, because, you know, I know how important that is for families and children to have their team photos, you know, that's important.
Okay.
So, Mayor, Council, I do think it would be helpful to decide whether the council's gonna vote and give a direction on an item, make a decision, for example, for canceling use of the park for the opening day ceremonies, which are going to allow practices and games, or...
Whether you're going to give that authority to the city manager to make on an ad hoc, case-by-case basis. Obviously, you won't be able to take all of those events, but if you're of a mind to say, like for this event, you know what to do, you might as well take a vote and give that direction.
Yeah, and I think...
If there are things you don't know.
I thought we were giving the direction, authority to the, to the city manager to do that, just asking that we be notified, and that was, that was what, and even coming back with a plan, which she can probably come back with a, I would feel he should come back with a backup plan by March 24th as it relates to our, our workforce.
Perfect. And if that's the consensus of the, of the council?
Madam Mayor, that would be my motion. Additionally, all the items that my fellow council members and yourself mentioned, us moving forward with, unless there's objections from any of the council members, my motion would be that we follow forward with all those items also. I'm hoping you guys made notes, at least it's on a recording.
And I was gonna say that. We have not only two or three notes, but an audio tape.
So it's been moved by Mayor Protim Scott and seconded by Councilmember Jabaka Jr. Any objections to that, here in that motion carries? And then, Council, I believe you had a third suggest, thing you wanted to walk us through?
I can talk a little bit about the telecommunications provisions in the governor's recent executive order, if you would like me to do that. That's just an informational item for you.
Well, and I think more importantly, is make sure our, our telecommunication plan is probably aligned with whatever the governor's order is, but if you'd like to.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Earlier today, the governor issued executive order N-25-20. It is available on the state's website. It has quite a few recitals in it, and it has 12 different specific orders. I won't go through all of them. Order 11 is the one that addresses the Brown Act. It doesn't allow, it doesn't suspend the Brown Act altogether, so we still have to comply with the Brown Act. But it does make telecommuting easier. You know that currently, if you telecommute, you have to post it on the agenda, who's gonna telecommute, or teleconference, you have to notice that in advance, in 72 hours, you have to post a notice at the location, you have to be at the location, the location has to be accessible for people to go and make comments at that location, and it has to be ADA accessible. All of those rules have been suspended. So you may now, in a regular meeting, special meeting, or emergency meeting, have somebody telecommute, they can call in and be considered part of the quorum, they can vote, and they do not have to post a notice at their location, and they do not have to be within the jurisdiction. So we have a lot more freedom to allow people to participate in meetings, even if they're outside of the jurisdiction of the city, as long as they can call in. Now, to the extent we know that somebody's going to telecommute in advance or teleconference into a council meeting, that should be noticed on the agenda. But we don't have to post the locations, we don't have to make them available. In addition, I would suggest that the governor's executive order really encourages what I think the council has been talking about, to find ways to allow the members of your community to participate in your meeting via teleconferencing or other electronic means, whether that's by email or text or some kind of live streaming to, say, from their room or hotel room or someplace else. I have a comment on this item, so they can watch it on TV and provide questions, whether it's submitting comments in advance. I would really encourage you to find a way for your community to do that, so they can, very similar to what Mayor said, you know, work where you are, participate from where you are. You don't have to, at this time, make a rule about not inviting public to your council meetings, you can see how the situation develops, but I would encourage you to direct the city manager and his staff to find ways for people to telecommute, and also encourage people who are high-risk, chronically ill, elderly who are the most susceptible to specifically avail themselves of the electronic means to participate in your meetings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I actually believe that's already in what we've said, so...
You bet.
Yep.
Okay. So, before we close, I don't know if there was any other comments that need to be made on this item from the public.
Nothing sad.
There's one person wanting to speak on the item from the public.
Good afternoon. John Donovan. I was wondering, I had a meeting scheduled in a week, Saturday, at the community center, and I'm, there was gonna include a lot of high-risk people. It was a memorial service, and I was wondering, I'm probably gonna cancel it, and the fees or the deposit, that kind of thing, is there any idea about maybe waiving the deposit or something like that?
Well, I, I won't speak out of order, but I would say, well, you know, absolutely, if you cancel the event, we certainly wouldn't wanna keep your fees, but let the city manager who's overseeing those items?
I could only second that motion, and I don't second motions.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yes, okay. And to that same point, if we find that we have counseling something and we have, have had people pay a deposit or something, we probably definitely need to make sure that they can get their refund without, yes, without a lot of accord. Okay, well, is there any other item?
No.
Too close?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Treheal and seconded by Mayor Protim Scott. To make sure we're adjourned, I'm sorry. One question, will you carry out, because we have other facilities, if someone, and he brought that up, if someone is also using our facilities, say, the church for a wedding, we need to make sure those things are up. And I got somebody who also has a question. I'm sorry, I thought, I was gonna, please come up, yeah. But I just thought about, he talked about the community center, but we also have the church, and we normally don't have inputs.
Absolutely, it's a graphic.
Yeah, we are, we are hosting church in Carter High School on Sunday, and we have over 600 people, so...
And that's Carter High School?
Yeah, that would be up to the school district.
That's the school district to take care of that, and I think they've spoken, they've got it, something on the website.
Don't let us know, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt the, we had a motion and a second to adjourn. If there's no other order, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Can I get you to sign this? Please, right there. Mayor, can I get you to sign this right there?